Good evening, everyone. Welcome to November 19th, 2024, meeting of the Dover School Committee. My name is Jeff Cassidy. I call this meeting to order at nine, sorry, 6:33. We're pleased to hold this open meeting at Dover Sherburne Middle School. This evening is also live stream with DSC TV. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. First on our agenda is community comments. Provided a Zoom link for those who wish to make a comment, but it's not possible to make it here. Do we have anybody for community comments online? I don't think anyone is here. And no one in person has a community comment. So we can move on to our next order of business, which is the superintendent's comments.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Dawn and I were just saying it's November 19th. Where did the time go? So just a few updates and then my teammates have updates that will continue on with all the work that we're doing. So the first is, as you know, one of my goals was around student voice. And so we have had our district leaders as well as our PLC leaders at Chicaring and our curriculum leaders at middle school and frontiers of high school shadowing students. And it's been an incredible experience. I shadowed a high school student. Denny shadowed a middle school student. And all of the feedback so far has been really positive. I think that students feel empowered, that they get to have students, get to have an adult follow them for the day and, you know, really care about what their world is like. And I thought it was powerful too, because I got to see all the experiences and the variety of instruction practices that are happening and just, you know, what a great experience our students have on a day-to-day basis. Similarly, Denny and I have launched the Superintendent Advisory Council officially right now. It's for the middle and high school students. We have 26 students serving and we will be meeting with elementary school students, probably more in a lunch bunch type atmosphere. But we're looking forward to that. And again, I think it's wonderful because I'm starting to recognize more students out about around campus and they say hello. And I can reference, you know, their, what they say about, you know, whether it's study hall or what they say about, you know, the flipped classroom model. So it's great to have that, that actual firsthand experience and information to share. I want to thank Dr. Reineman for hosting a day in the life at Chicaring. I'm not sure if any of you were able to take advantage of that.
Yeah, Jessie and I enjoyed it.
Great. Yeah. So you had an opportunity to walk the day and, you know, have a little shadow with student experience yourself by visiting the classroom. So glad that happened. And thank you to Dr. Reineman and Mr. Carnes for making that work. We've been busy analyzing data and Assistant Superintendent Conklin will soon give you an overview of MCAS and all of the data that we use to supplement that as we decide curriculum changes and how to support our students. And then we are deep into FY '26 budget planning, which of course Dawn will give you a thorough overview of the first version of our, our budget. So lots going on, busy time of year. Happy to take any questions. But again, Denny and Dawn also have a lot to share tonight.
Any questions?
I have a quick question about the Superintendent Advisory Council. So you said there are 28 students?
26 students. Right now it's middle and high school.
Okay.
And then the elementary will look a little different.
Yeah. And do the kids volunteer to participate?
Yep. They volunteered and I tried to get, you know, three or four students from each grade level, six through 12.
Okay.
And we had our first meeting at the November 6th early release day. It's so hard when you have such invested, busy students.
Yeah.
I mean, unless I was going to have the meeting Sunday night at 10:00, you can't get them together. So these are also very dedicated kids because they're giving up their half-day, like, social time to be with us, which says a lot. So yeah, they put a lot of ideas on the table around thinking about the surveys they take and how many surveys they take. They've talked about looking at, you know, loftier things like graduation requirements. So we have a whole spectrum of ideas and we're going to start to sift through what makes sense to look at this year.
Is there a student body government in the middle and high school? Is that separate from what you're establishing now?
Yeah.
So it would be a separate committee?
Yeah.
Run separately?
Yeah. And there is a little bit of overlap with students, but not very many.
Okay.
Yeah. So this will just be to advise us, you know, about initiatives we can help them carry out, but also as we're talking about, you know, the classroom experience and best practices and those sorts of things to be able to give us feedback on their experience.
That's great.
Two ways straight.
Yeah.
Totally.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So I know you've all been waiting for the presentation on MCAS. I can feel the excitement in the room. And here we are. So I'm pleased tonight to give you an update on the Chicaring MCAS scores from spring of 2024. Before we begin, just to set the table, first is a quote by education researcher John Hattie about the purpose of assessments. He says, "The major purpose of assessment in schools should be to provide interpretive information to teachers and school leaders about their impact on students so that these educators have the best information about what steps to take with instruction and how they need to change and adapt." So you often hear a lot of analogies, like what is data? There are signals. One of the ones that I really like is data as kind of a flashlight. It sheds some light on some small parts, but it doesn't, you don't see the whole thing by looking at it. So when we're thinking about our MCAS data, we know that it only is one section of what is going on in our classrooms on an everyday basis. And I think that this data pyramid does a good job at indicating that. At the very top of our data pyramid, you can see the assessments that we, that just happen once a year. So things like the MCAS, AP scores and SATs at the high school. Then there's things that happen two to three times a year. So those are some of our diagnostic tools, the iXL, our phonics screener, our DIBELS screener, our universal math screener. We have our Panorama SEL surveys. At secondary level, there's midterms and finals. We know there are things that happen at the end of a unit. So those are like the end of the unit tests or end of the unit quizzes or projects that students have. Once, four times a month, we have formative common assessments. So that might be a math problem of the week, a science journal, other written work samples. And then we know that our teachers are checking in on our students on a daily basis through formative assessments, exit tickets, student self-reflections, just walking around the room, talking to students, seeing where they're at. And that really makes up the bulk of the information that teachers are taking in and then using that to make decisions about how they are going to make their moves in the classroom. And a couple of weeks ago, we had talked to about data team meetings and just the amount of other sources that are coming together in order to make decisions about how we meet students where they're at and how we support our students. So again, MCAS gives, it's a standardized test. It gives us some insight into things, but it isn't the be-all, end-all. And I think that in Dover Sherburne, one of the things I've really appreciated is that we've always looked at MCAS just as like one part of the larger picture. So before we get to the specific results at Chicaring, I just wanted to give you an overview of the state landscape and what has happened in the past year with the 2024 MCAS across the state. So overall, across the entire state of Massachusetts, the ELA scores, and this is elementary, middle school and high school, consider, continued to show a lower achievement in all the grades from 2023. So scores slightly went down in a lot of places in ELA throughout the state. And we continue to see a gap in where students are at with their ELA scores since before COVID. Statewide, math results showed improvement in third grade. And then other grades, they were pretty flat throughout the state overall. Science results across the state showed improved achievement in grades five and 10 and then a little bit lower of an achievement in grade eight. And one of the things that the commissioner has been talking about has been the impact of chronic absenteeism, which we've been dealing with since COVID and is spiked. Chronic absenteeism is students who are absent for 20 days or more. And it makes sense that if you're not in school, it's hard to learn and get the things that you need. So we know that chronic absenteeism has had a significant impact on student achievement and that there is correlation between student absences and tardies and then how they're doing on standardized tests and other measures of achievement. So that gives you an overview of where we are with the state. So ELA went down, math pretty steady, science improved overall. And that will set the table for you to see in the context of what happened at Chicaring and in Dover last year.
Before you move too far?
Yes.
I'm sorry. So that's the state landscape. In terms of chronic absenteeism, how much are we seeing that in the Chicaring level? I think you mentioned Dover Sherburne generally speaking was having a better experience of that?
Yeah, much, much less so. And, you know, I think given all the supports that we have and the programming to support kids and transitioning back, even if a child is out for a few days, they come back, they feel settled. So we're seeing very little of it.
Good. That's awesome.
And just some terms that you're going to hear as we go through this presentation. When you hear student achievement, we're talking about the student scores. So the actual scores that students earn, that kind of raw number. And what that is going to show is a comparison from year to year. So we'll be looking at scores from this year's fourth grade compared to how last year's fourth grade did. So it's kind of not an apples-to-apples because we're looking at two different sets of kids, but how they all did in fourth grade. To look at the same set of kids, that's when you're going to want to look at an SGP, the Student Growth Percentile. So that measures how students have done relative to how they did the year before. So the state uses their formulas to determine what that target growth percentile should be. And then we see from third to fourth grade, fourth to fifth grade, what the student individual growth is from the last time they took the MCAS. So we don't have SGPs for our third grade students because they'd never taken it before. So there's nothing to measure in terms of their growth. So that just gives you a little bit of the terminology that you'll hear. So in terms of Chicaring, I'll start with ELA in grades three through five. The good news about all of our scores is that Dover and Chicaring continue to outperform the state. You can see in our percentage of students who are meeting or exceeding expectations were 25% higher than the state average in scaled score, were 12 points higher than the scaled score. And you can see that with our average SGP that went up from last year. I mean, our students are showing more growth in ELA since the year before. So you can see that overall, we had more students who were in that meeting and exceeding category, which is where we want to be. And then you can see the comparison to 2023 and the comparison to the state for 2024.
Denny, you just said something there, the scaling. How does the scaling work? So assuming there's nobody who gets 100 on this and it's like a traditional like grade curve or how do they?
So they take into account all the results and then they kind of control for like confounding variables or things that might pop up that might have made one question, you know, universally unsound throughout the state and just all, all students didn't do well on it. And that's kind of how they end up with that final score. So our ELA results, again, in this grand scheme of the whole state, the fact that we were showing improvements from last year is good considering across the state, most schools were going down in ELA. In math, a lot of great growth. So 77% of our students were either meeting or exceeding expectations. That's 34% higher than the state average. So you can see in the comparison from last year to this year, that was a 4% increase in our students who are meeting the expectations. Our scale score went up slightly and our average SGP also went up slightly as well. So good news in terms of math, that more than three quarters of our students are meeting or exceeding.
Denny, on the math, do you happen to have a further breakout, probably not this presentation, but understanding those kids who were in the pilot program last year, if they outperformed their other peers, even though it's not apples-to-apples?
Yep. So that was one of the first things I looked at when the MCAS scores came out. And our students that had been in the Reveal pilots, the math program that we ended up adopting, did very well on it. There are a number of other interesting variables that make it hard to tell if it was 100% the math program that did it or other factors, such as like the teacher's years of experience. I will say that our students who were in the illustrative pilot did not do as well as the students that were in the Reveal pilot.
Interesting.
But I think that a lot of the scores that I looked at corresponded more to years of teacher experience teaching or just, I think, teacher's confidence in teaching math. And so it's hard to really tease out if it was because of the program or if there are other factors at play.
When you're looking at the programs, there was hope that Reveal would lead to higher scores. So fingers crossed that another year of data will show that.
Yep. Yeah, the language that's used throughout Reveal, we've talked about how the teachers and students are struggling with it being very language-heavy. The math MCAS is also very language-heavy. So we think that, we hope that our students are going to come into the MCAS feeling more prepared and used to seeing all the words and having some strategies and some more stamina and getting through some of the language on the test. So we will see. When we were doing the common assessments in the pilot last year, we'd pulled those all from MCAS and our Reveal students did do much better than all of the other students. So that's math. And then in science, some great growth from last year. So we went up 15% in our students who are meeting or exceeding. So 76% of our students were meeting or exceeding in fifth grade science. Again, that's 31% higher than the state. And our average scale score went up from the year by seven points. So you can see that in science, our students did very well. And that we saw, again, that kind of shift up of more students exceeding and then a shift up, more students moving from partially meeting to meeting. So what are some of the big takeaways from this data? So some successes, as I mentioned, our Chicaring students continue to perform well above the state average. Our ELA proficiency in all grades went up, so again, versus the state trend of going down. Our average SGP in all content areas increased. Again, that's looking at student growth from year to year. In fifth grade math, we saw an 11-point increase in SGPs. And then in fourth grade ELA, we saw an eight-point increase in student SGPs. So those are some pretty impressive growth that our students are making from year to year. I can highlight third grade math. 90% of our third graders either exceeded or met the expectations. And that's actually higher than we were performing pre-COVID. So that statistic kind of is very impressive. And I think it gets to just our third grade team, but also just the cohort of students that maybe just have some strengths in math.
Also, first cohort that wasn't at all impacted by COVID. So.
They were kindergarten.
They were kindergarten, yeah.
No. Oh, when it shut down.
Yeah.
No. No, they, they, it was like the, the iffy year.
It was barely still COVID. That's correct.
It was a high-grade year.
No. No, 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 it was not. I have a third grader. It was not. It was, it was.
Current fourth graders.
Current fourth grader.
These are current.
Yeah, my fourth grader was 100% impacted by it.
Yes. Yes, your fourth grader was like.
Different story.
Yeah.
Less impacted.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yep.
But this year's third graders will not have that at all.
That's right.
So that will be very interesting to see.
Fair point. Yeah.
Again, very impressive to see our growth in fifth grade science and our students that were either exceeding or meeting expectations going up. And then when we looked at our subgroups, we saw that our low-income students, that specific subgroup, were closing the achievement gap in ELA and science between low-income students and our non-low-income students. So that's good to see. That was one of the things last year when I was presenting our Student Opportunity Act that we want to really focus on is our low-income students. So that's good to see the progress that we're making in closing that gap. We also saw the proficiency rate in our SGPs go up for our Black and African-American students over the past year. So that was another subgroup that we were looking at in our Student Opportunity Act data. Some focus areas moving forward. When we went through the item analysis on the ELA, writing continues to be an area that our students are struggling in. It's both the essay portion where they have to produce the writing and in kind of the multiple choice portion where they have to look at other writing and analyze it. So we've been looking at class schedules, figuring out how we can build in more time for writing, thinking about how we can focus on writing across the content areas so that students see the skills that they're using in ELA. They can use some of those same skills in social studies. As I mentioned, our new math program has a lot more language in it and since we're actually writing more in math. So we'll see if that has any impact on the writing scores, but we're looking at that as an area that we want to grow in. Our math item analysis showed a need for some more targeted instruction specifically in fractions in third grade. And if any of you have had third graders, you probably know the stress that fractions can cause. Then fifth grade in data and fractions in third and fifth grade and then data and measurement in fourth grade. So teachers are going through the specific standards that each question on the MCAS looked at and trying to figure out if there's something they need to do differently this year in the way they're teaching in those areas. And then finally, an area for growth for us is our subgroup data is showing that our students with disabilities are not performing at the same levels as their peers. So they're showing growth kind of from year to year, but there's still a gap in how our students with disabilities are doing versus students who don't have disabilities. So that's something that we want to look at as well. And just our special education team is going to be going over the MCAS data, going over item analysis, looking at skills, but that's something that we want to keep an eye on as well. So.
Denny, how do you define disability? Is that anybody on an IEP? Or is that a specific disability?
Yep. So any student that's on an IEP.
And when you say not performing, is it in specific areas or is it just across the board?
So this is across the board in science, math and ELA.
How do you not have like confounding, how do you analyze that though? I mean, there's different levels of IEPs, there's different levels of disabilities. Like, that must be a very hard analysis to get accurate, I guess, if you don't have certain information. I mean, if it's, if the true definition is an IEP, that feels very broad.
Open architects, right?
Yep. And I mean, I have to give credit because prior to this presentation, Dr. Reineman, Mr. Carnes, the math coach, the literacy coach, combed through all of the MCAS data. And I think we're lucky enough to be a small school where they did do the breakdown of, they looked at every student who was not meeting or partially meeting. And then they looked specifically at each student, which of the disabilities they had, which of the areas they needed. Like, they really went down to a very granular level. So I think that's really helpful. And then they compared that list to students who are getting tier-two supports in interventions and checked to see if maybe through the diagnostic tests at the beginning of the year, if we'd missed any students. So I thought it was, they did a great job. They have been very thorough in their analysis of like student by student.
It feels like it's almost more your takeaway in addition to the analysis, but you've done sort of this extra level of analysis to confirm that this is the finding. Okay, cool.
And then you've heard a lot about these things, but how we are connecting to our overall district improvement efforts. So we continue to have data team meetings. We have a wonderful platform called Open Architects now. So all admin teachers and support staff have access to our MCAS dashboard so they can look at these results themselves. We have a new MTSS dashboard, which is tracking students who are in interventions, allowing teachers to write in notes for the students who have interventions, putting in a level of engagement that they had during the interventions. And this is just going to be a great progress monitoring tool for people to have. And then as a whole school, Chicaring is going to be looking at the MCAS results. And then individual grade level teams are going to be going more into that item analysis and looking at the specific standards and where students struggled and where students succeeded. And as I mentioned, the special ed department is also going to be looking at this data. Connections to some of the content areas. So obviously, we're implementing a new math curriculum. We think the focus on number routines and fluency is going to help students and their achievement on the MCAS. We have better diagnostics than we've ever had using the universal math screener, really caught a lot of kids, we think, this year. And we've been continuing on with iXL math. And we have this year been starting to use a new research and evidence-based intervention program called Bridges to help with our tier-two and our tier-three instruction. In ELA, again, we have better diagnostics tests. So DIBELS is now happening in grades K through five. So beforehand, it only happened in K through two. So this year, we're expanding it to three, four and five. And we're doing a new phonics screener in grades K through two that our estimates show that it has about like 80 to 85% accuracy in the way that it's kind of diagnosing our students and pointing out areas that they need to improve on. And similarly to math, we have a research and evidence-based ELA intervention, some 95% groups phonics lessons. This is fantastic because based on the screener, it tells our interventionists like specifically which lesson or like which bag of materials to pick up and to use with students. So we kind of made it so that it's a very, very clear way to address anything that popped up on that phonics screener. And when we think about our kind of achievement gap that we're seeing with our students with disabilities or students or non-such with disabilities, this year we moved to having building-based special ed coordinators and not split between the schools. So it'll be interesting to see if that might have any impact. I know that our special ed coordinator at Chicaring has been able to really focus in on one place this year, similar to now having a building-based math coach. So I think that's going to be really helpful. So that is the overall presentation. I'm happy to take additional questions or comments people have.
This is very helpful. Thank you.
I was just struck, if going back to the pyramid of like information, the first slide that you showed. I think all of the, all of the data besides the top MCAS is like used internally by staff? And then the only public data available is MCAS. Is that right?
This year, in parent-teacher conferences, you should have gotten a copy of the DIBELS results for your student.
Yeah, you're right. You're right. But other than that.
We get the grades, well.
The, I'm just trying to, I'm just, I'm trying to think of like.
It doesn't go public like out, there's a way for the public to judge.
Right.
How the school is doing.
School is doing.
Except for those.
The, the MCAS.
And at a cumulative level.
And then from a parent perspective, it's pretty minimal with the grades, it's kind of connection with teachers.
Exactly.
And then the DIBELS, which is actually fabulous to, to get this year. It's not, I mean, that analysis was so great, but you can kind of see why, like with that limited piece of information, people latch on to the MCAS is so key because it's just really the only opportunity that people get. But I totally understand why, having kind of like, you know, knowing about all of these pieces of data.
And we have been corroborating the data as well. So I've been looking at our math iXL scores, our DIBELS scores and seeing if they correspond to how students were doing on the MCAS. And usually I would say our students are doing anywhere between 5% to 8% better on those assessments than on the MCAS.
Interesting.
So you have that one day, there are two days where there's a lot of pressure and it's kind of a unique situation. So I think it makes sense that we see kind of a bump in these kind of lower stakes diagnostics that students are participating in.
That makes a ton of sense.
Does iXL share any data, like blinded data, understand how we do with those assessments compared to iXL is thousands of elementary schools? Like, do they ever give any benchmarking where we are with that stuff?
I've actually not seen any benchmarking compared to other districts. One that we do see is our SEL surveys that we give to students. We see a comparison nationally. But it's hard to tell with iXL because, as you mentioned, there are other districts that use it, but not all districts use it. Some use iReady, some are using Star or MAP. So even if you were comparing our, us to other iXL districts, it would be kind of choppy data because it would just be a select group of schools. So I'm guessing that's probably why they don't release that data. But I could be wrong.
Is AP scores and SATs, that's public data, right? That becomes public data?
It is now. I presented it at the region's mini-meeting.
But that's not going to impact our Chicaring students. I'm just, I'm just thinking about it.
But all of those are very healthy, robust scores.
Totally.
I will say, over the eight years that I've been here, the number of diagnostic tools and benchmarks that we are using has increased, not to a point where students are being tested every day, but so much so that we don't have to rely on that once a year MCAS scores that you don't get the data for last spring until their students are in the next grade in the fall, where we can get that information and give the targeted intervention in, you know, the four to six-week window and then move on to the next skill. So hopefully over time, you know, given that they are correlated with the MCAS scores in terms of skills and expectations, we'll start to see students have more and more growth.
Totally.
I mean, this daily stuff that's happening right now, so one of the things in Reveal is they have online exit tickets. So if students are doing the online version, it's collecting information on how they're answering and then actually tells the teacher tomorrow when you're teaching, this group of students, you need to reinforce this skill, this group of students should be working on this. And like having, I've been going in and teaching Reveal lessons and there's so many resources, but to have something kind of push you in the right direction of which group of students needs what is insanely helpful. So our students, our teachers are really just making a lot of good decisions on a day-to-day basis on how they want to work with their students.
Awesome.
Now that we have the coaches and the interventionists, I mean, that's within the last five years as well. You know, other districts have had those for years and years and years, and we're just catching up with those levels of coaching and levels of support too. So hopefully, that'll help.
Awesome. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we can move on to financial reports.
Yes, good evening, everyone. In your packet, you have your monthly warrant report. And again, I always thank Jesse for going over and being your signer. Tomorrow. Get a report to duty tomorrow. And so you'll see the warrants that have been sent over to the town for processing since your last meeting. In addition, you have your monthly operating report, which in order to give you the most up-to-date data as possible is why you have November fourteen. So I, payroll was posted, we had some warrant, so you, you know as much data as we know right now. And as you know, I do the rolling report, and so that new information is updated in bold. So we've had a steady month, you don't see a whole lot of bold. You don't see a lot of bold until you get over to the new information about circuit breaker. So there, I think you have detailed explanations about some of the variances we're seeing, but at this point, we don't have any new variances to share with you regarding circuit breakers. So it has been finalized. You'll see the total amount that Dover's receiving, a little over one point two million. That's comprised of, just so you can understand the components of reimbursement, about a million in tuition. But keep in mind, I know this gets complicated, but we had that reserve relief last year that we got the money in advance, but it got taken away from our, it was almost like a prepaid advance. Right, so we would have gotten closer to one point three, but we got a little bit extra last year. So the one point, the one, the one million is net of that. And then the number that we, we're never quite sure what's going to be is transportation cost because it's a fairly complicated formula as well as knowing what the true reimbursement rate's going to be. So we're getting a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars in transportation costs. That's at a forty-four percent reimbursement rate. Just for comparison purposes, last year, that was at fifty-seven percent. So the transportation reimbursement has become our new unknown as far as, we can bank on tuition being at seventy-five percent because in prior years before transportation was added, you weren't guaranteed to get seventy-five percent of your tuition. So that number, we now know, and when I start doing the budgets now, I can almost guarantee that we're going to get seventy-five percent of the tuition cost when we're forecasting what we're going to get next year. The unknown is the reimbursement rate for transportation. So that's, that's taken the, that's taken the unknown component. But the good thing about the formula is that in most cases, I'll say that next year will be the same, they have enough money to cover the tuition. So what they do is they make sure they have, they have to fully fund your tuition reimbursement at the seventy-five percent, which is the mandated rate. Then they, whatever's left, they flow through to transportation. But, you know, several years ago, we were getting zero for transportation. So the fact that we're getting a hundred and sixty-two thousand for transportation is just, I think, phenomenal. And then just continuing on, luckily, we have that circuit breaker because we are running a negative variance in our out of districts, if you recall. That variance hasn't changed, but we are looking at about, right now, close to net seven hundred thousand of Dover. So we have that circuit breaker there that is there as our reserve. And as you can see at the bottom, then we compute that in so that your, our give back to the town right now looks about to be seven hundred thousand. Where, that'll go down, but we're eating into circuit breaker. So we have expended, this is sort of helpful for the budget too. So we've expended the whole budget, which we thought was everything we were going to have, plus we've gone beyond that and are having to dip into circuit breaker.
Yeah, because Dover doesn't take circuit breaker into account. It happens to be the reserve that we needed.
Exactly.
With that unknown variance.
Exactly. And that has been happening now for the last several years where it's been helpful. Because if we budgeted for something that we were, say, we said we're going to get a million dollars in circuit breaker, and so we budgeted ten million, eight, we would be in a position right now where we'd have to go back to the town and ask for supplemental reserve to cover that. And I think back in the day when this whole methodology for the town to budget this way was when the tuition reimbursement was a big unknown. I mean, there'd be years it'd be thirty-five percent, it could be forty percent. So I think just to cover themselves, that extra money was just always there to flow into free cash if need be, but they never had to worry about having to go during the school year and making up for an unknown that they didn't know about. So it has come, it has been beneficial to the school community, at least for the last couple of years. I'm hoping for one of those years, we'll get back to where we actually turn back almost all the circuit breaker. And that would happen in the case where whatever we budgeted turned out to be exactly what happened. And when that's the case, a hundred percent of circuit breaker would go back to the towns. We're not there, but I'm keeping my fingers crossed that one of these years, we will be back. Because in the past, we have been able to do that. And that's mainly in situations where we probably had some changes, but it wasn't, we left a little bit of positive or it just all netted out. We've just been having some unfavorable placements that have happened in between budget years. So any questions on your monthly report? One thing I forgot to add to your report that I did share with the other two committees was that our, my assistant business administrator, who's been with the district for twelve years, actually officially retired as of October thirty-first. So if anyone ever saw Lee and Wilkie's name, so I just wanted to publicly thank her for the years that she worked for me, and she worked actually in the district before I did. She's going on to the next chapter in her life to be a grandmother, and we're so excited for her. And we are really close to hopefully finding a replacement. We've, the job's been posted, we've done interviews, actually have an offer outstanding, so we'll see where that plays out. But I wanted to actually just thank her for the twelve years that she gave to the district.
That's great, thank you.
Okay. So our next item is action items, which is the proposed FY twenty-six budget.
Great, so I'll just kick off the conversation by saying thank you to the taxpayers of Dover who makes such an exceptional educational program available for our students. Thank you to the Dover warrant committee for being our partners and keeping an eye on the larger picture of the town, but also making sure that the students are well, students in schools are well-supported. Thank you to all of you for, you know, we just finished FY twenty-four, we're living FY twenty-five, and now we're planning FY twenty-six. So the next few months will be a journey with all of you. So thank you for your support and your constructive input and, and suggestions. And most importantly, thank you to Dawn for leading us through this process. All of the heavy work for all three budget years lands on you. So thank you for your dedication in that. So as you know, we take our strategic plan, our five-year district plan, which is in your budget book, and we look at that in terms of the initiatives that we're working on and what our needs might be in terms of resources for students. We take Dr. Reineman's school improvement plan and consider that too. Luckily, there's a through line with the district plan and think about what she might need at Chikering next year. We take both of those into account to meet the needs of our students, but also try to build a fiscally responsible budget for the town of Dover. Anytime that there's a one-time purchase, and Dawn will get into details of this, such as a math curriculum, we take that money out, we don't just leave it in the budget as, as extra. And Dawn is always encouraging us to spend smarter. So luckily, as she goes through the budget, you'll see that our number of increases is pretty low this year. This process starts in October. Dr. Reineman meets with all of her PLC and elective leaders to find out what the needs are within the departments and make adjustments. Dr. Reineman and Mr. Carnes then come to central office and meet with Dawn, Denny, Kate McCarthy, and myself, along with Brandon Hall, our director of educational technology. We all wear our different hats and look at the budget holistically to make sure that all of our pieces are lining up and our needs across all of those departments make sense. And then Dawn goes behind the scenes, plugs in all the numbers, does all the magic, and then presents to you tonight, version one point O of the budget, which again, will tweak over the next couple of months as we get more information about programming and needs and retirements. But hopefully, this will be our high watermark and we'll be improving from here. So thank you.
Well, thank you for that great introduction. And so hopefully, everyone had a little time to just sort of peruse the book. Remember, this is our, sort of our kickoff. As you spend more time with it, if there's more information that you want, please let Jeff know, and we can have that additional information presented for you in January. The other thing that we'll be doing at additional meetings is supporting some of the budget initiatives as well and some of the program that we do at the joint meeting. We're going to be talking about some of the special education programs. Chikering now houses the connections program. You'll see how that sort of has a budgetary impact. But we want to share that discussion of the special education programs with all three committees because we do look at ourselves as a K-12, and it impacts actually all three districts. As you know, we have students from Pine Hill attending the connections program, so that has an impact on the Sherburne budget. And then anything that we can do to keep students in district and also helps both Dover and Sherburne, but then also let the region know what's coming their way for programs that we may start at the elementary level that then have to grow up to the region. So we will provide some of that K-12 information to you at the, at the joint meeting. But jumping in a little bit, we always build our budget based on a set of assumptions and level enrollment is what we're assuming. It's one of our assumptions for fiscal year twenty-five, and we'll talk about just briefly the enrollment projections that are in your tab three. We received the guidance from Dover warrant that's included in your packet. I think we are always, are totally in line with what they want us to do as far as, you know, funding our services at the same level. If it costs more, they're okay with that, but also staying, looking at our existing budget line items and trimming where we can. And so we do do a line-by-line item analysis. As you'll see, if you look at the detail, you'll see some ins and outs. So we don't really leave any line item without taking a look at our trends over across the years and then understanding what makes up that line item. In addition, as Beth noted in your packet for your convenient reference, is the district strategy plan, the Chikering School Improvement Plan. And just because it's had such a big impact, I think, on just how we're practicing the best practices poster, I think that then gives you a great resource as I always, I know everyone's electronic, but I'm still sort of like, I'd always take my books to school committee meetings. You can take great notes on this, where you can see the connections. So you can almost, if you live at home, this is a great research, a reference binder for you to keep on hand. In addition, I always just like the quick overview of the budget so you can do a quick snapshot and see the salaries, the other education, the general education, transportation, which we'll be talking about, buildings or grounds, and then your out of district. It's a nice way to see a compact view of that, so we put that in the overview. And then also in your packet, it's important to highlight the entitlement grants that we continue to get because without those, it's important to realize what expenses may have to come in to the operating funds. And so it's always, we don't, our largest one is the SPED two forty grant, which covers several EA positions. We're fortunate that, you know, we're not dependent on a lot of grants, but it's still important to see that grant money that we get and how we allocate it in our operating budget, actually supplements our operating budget because it's outside. So, you know, it's always fun for me to add up the numbers and see where we are. And so we're looking at an increase of your overall budget of just a little more than two percent. Your fiscal year twenty-five increase was four point eight six percent. Keep in mind, though, that we're very cognizant about looking at this budget in two pieces, your in-district piece and your out-of-district piece. So what's really driving our two percent this particular year is the reduction we're seeing in our out-of-district. Your in-district operating budget is seeing an increase of six point five one. That is a little higher than you would see on a normal basis, but as we talk about the connections program and the expansion that we need to do, that's making up that little extra. Our, I would say our typical is in the four to five and a half range, actually, four and a half to five and a half range, if you are looking at not doing any additions or deletions. But the way our contractual contracts work, given that we're eighty-seven percent payroll in this budget, that's about where you come in if you just did everything, you didn't have anything but your contractual increases. But so it is very important to be excited about the two percent, but to understand how that is being derived.
When you talk about the out-of-district, and we had that, that relatively significant variance this year, is that turning into the baseline for next year?
It is not. That's one of those weird, so that, and not, that situation was an impact in fiscal year twenty-four that wasn't in the twenty-four budget. It was one of the reasons why in September or October, I mentioned that it was a situation, it was a out-of-district placement that we thought was going to end, and it didn't.
Right.
So it is ending now, in this year.
For sure, for sure?
For sure, for sure.
Okay, right.
We have documented.
So therefore, you're not seeing, like, if you look at budget to budget, you're wondering why our variances are so high. It's because, and this happens, sometimes there's placements that may just happen in a year, and you never pick them up in a budget. And that's, that's what's happened here.
Yeah, that's fair. I just was curious how, make sure we don't repeat that.
Yeah, so you don't, when you're looking at budget to budget, you sometimes don't see that. Exactly, exactly. And so then we look at the key budget driver. So really, what is going to impact our budget? And if we look at the in-district enrollment, obviously, right? Where in elementary school, how many sections you have, how many students you have, plays a big role in what your budget's going to be. So we're still estimating, you know, in the same range of students that would potentially fill twenty-five classroom sections. We will be keeping our eyes on the incoming kindergarten and the first grade students. We sometimes see an uptick in first grade coming in from the outside, so that's why, you know, there is potential maybe to see some growth. Where our initial census right now for kindergarten is about fifty-nine. I'm using the three-year average in enrollment right now. We usually wait till we sort of get a clearer view of that, what's going to happen with that fifty-nine, find out if there's people that are moving into town that's not in the fifty-nine, who may hold back and not go, who may go, you know, someplace else. So we wait till we get a little better information. So we will definitely have as true of information as we can in March when you make your final decision. But note that those are two grades that were, I think kindergarten's going to be okay because we only have three sections. I think it's the fourth grade that, I mean, the first grade, that looks a little low for the number of sections that we have assigned to it right now.
I'm wondering if there's anything we can do to get better estimates? Because I know last year, we thought that the kindergarten class was going to be really small, and then they ended up growing kind of, oh, last minute, but pretty last.
That was the year, the year before, right?
It was, it's this incoming class, though, that we projected it to be lower, and then I think it, it grew more than what we originally projected.
Yeah, yeah. But I don't think it would have been, I don't think it would have changed.
I don't think, totally, but I just, I, I remember looking at the data at one point, and then like, come September, it was a lot higher.
So we were, we were thinking that during COVID, the census might have gotten a little wacky because it used to be actually pretty good, the census that the town does.
Yeah.
So we'll see how that now starts panning out. But you can't control, you don't really know move-ins. You know, so that is something that we don't know. And there's some decision-making that parents may make too, you don't know. But I think that we're comfortable that no, having three sections averaged and looking at the sixty-six number versus the fifty-nine, that will be okay for kindergarten. We just don't want to go below.
Total, yeah.
Too far. But I think it's then seeing what kind of growth we could potentially see in first grade.
For the, for the kindergarten class?
Yeah, for the kindergarten class now.
Right.
What is, what is it going to look like for first grade?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then keep in mind, whenever we make decisions about number of sections, we always look long-term.
Right.
So we would never make a decision if it was something that was only going to be a one-year, that doesn't make sense. We've already invested in your staff.
Right.
Everything is working, so we never think about doing that unless we see that there's going to be a trend that we don't have enough students to suffice.
That makes sense.
So that's why we're not doing anything now.
Yeah.
Just want to put it out there. And as, you know, the warrant's looking at it, as you guys are looking at it, as the town people are looking at it, know that it's on our radar, and it's something that we're looking at as well.
So you're budgeting kindergarten to have fifty-nine?
No, that's just the census that we have right now.
Okay, but so this, the number that's in tab three is what we should be looking at in terms of?
Yeah, the number that is, we're carrying right now is the methodology that we just take a three-year rolling average of what kindergarten happened. Yeah, that's what we do until we get a better, better sense. And then that, it plays well for us right now because sixty-six is a good number to hold, hold a three. And as we mentioned, salaries is another key budget driver. We do have, we're in the third year in fiscal year twenty-six for all of our contractual agreements. So, and they're all at three percent COLA. Remember that your educators also have steps and lanes. So on the average, that takes a three percent, adds about additional one point six percent. That is factoring in that you've got some staff members that may be getting, you know, six to eight percent. And I think you can see that, given that the budget's for one school, in some of the positions where there's only one, when you see that increase, you're actually seeing what that. what that person is getting for steps and, for the steps and the COLA. So that's an anomaly that, you know, it takes a little while for people to understand that we say we're 3% COLA, but the educators are continuing to move on the matrix where they're getting step increases as well. And the, like I said, then all the other agreements that we have right now have a flat 3% COLA, so that is built into all the other staff positions. I also provided for you sort of a staffing summary so that you can see how many educators we have, what staff EAs we have, and each general education, special education, some of the specialist educators to give you sort of a flavor of what composes the personnel. And in that background, it also provides where we are asking for additional positions. And right now it's really all in the special education. We are increasing the budget for some things that happened in 25 that came along with the connections program. If you remember reading your report, your monthly report, we said we had to do a few tweaks to the special related services when we brought connections over to Chicreen. So we're taking that into account. It's about .25 for OT and PT. And with the growing age of the students, so that will be coming in onboard, we are going to be adding a second connections group because you'll have K-2, 3, 5, how it will split, but you don't do a connections program, K-5. So we now have cohorts moving up. We still have cohorts moving into the connections program from the lower grades. So we will be opening a second connections program or in fiscal year 26, and that will be a 1.0 educator. And then with that, we're looking to also add an additional .2 speech language pathologists to cover those, that growing program. So that is just for warrant too, but for school committee, that is a request, but it's actually a necessity because we're going to have the students in the, in the building and we do need to provide the classroom support for them.
And physically, that's the same classroom?
No.
So it's not, they're going to have to take a?
Another section or, you know, it's, it's not a, they're not in the classroom, they go in and out.
But the, there's a homeroom, right now that there's a homeroom connections?
They'll be, they're actually assigned to a classroom and then, yes, there is a.
And that homeroom space is suitable for the?
Expanded group. I think they're looking at actually using a second space.
A second space, okay.
Again, there are sort of educational requirements about the age span of who's in a classroom. And so you have to sort of abide by that. And by that, we'd, we'd look, be looking for a second space to house the second program, which as much as what we, that's the exact same situation we had at Pine Hill. There was a lower connections and an upper connections and they both had their separate spaces. So I, I say that because we're saying it's a requested position, however, it's a necessity because we do have the cohort of students there and the age group dictates two programs. So hopefully that gives you some flavor. Also in this proposed staffing, there's, I show you where we are using the grants in your pre-K revolving as well to fund some of the education, educational assistant positions, but also know you're running two pre-Ks at Chicreen. One is fully funded by the general operating budget and the other actually is funded by the pre-K revolving. So I think it's important just to highlight that to you guys.
I'm sorry, just, I have to ask a question.
No, go ahead.
I know that one of our variances through this year was in the, the special education area. This is one where you would have used as a baseline and incorporated and floated into the budget?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yep, so you will see that incorporated in.
I was trying to do the comparison, it seems like it's tracing.
Yes.
And then maybe a little bit more, right?
Right, because it, because it increases.
Right, yeah.
Exactly. Thank you for like, one, one more on special education?
Uh-huh. So there's a lot of, you explained the increases beautifully, but is there a reason why the summer services doesn't increase with like expanded?
Because we don't run multiple programs necessarily and we, we do share programming now with Pine Hill.
Okay.
So we're sharing the costs and therefore it's actually more cost effective. And so we're finding that what we spent last year for special education, for the summer programming is still fitting within the budget. Because you could have more kids, but we're still only running a pre-K and a connections program or a special ed program, depending on what it, what it needs to be. So there, we've always done that. We even did that, even when Pine Hill had connections, that program was still at Chicreen and we might've had one or two people go. So there is not a need at this point to increase the summer services.
Even though the group is expanding?
Right.
Excuse me, so connections is the summer program for special ed?
Mm-hmm. And we change its name, it's like one of those things where we change its names every year, but now I've got connections in my head. We're going to go with connections. Exactly. And that's something that we'll get into a little more detail too at the joint meeting where we sort of show the K-12 continuum of our special education program and the benefit of by building these programs, hopefully when we talk about out of district, you'll see that we're down to just projecting 15 out of district placements next year. And I think that is the strength of us.
Yeah.
Being able to keep more students in district and it's so much more cost effective to keep your students in district. So these incremental costs that we're adding for the connections, you have one or two of those students go out and that totally wipes out.
We do what we need to do.
Exactly, exactly. So, and we're fortunate that we have the space to do it and, you know, the experienced staff to come in and do it well, so.
It speaks volumes for the skill of.
Yeah.
So when, so when those students age out or they're no longer the out of district students, does that money go special ed or is it just distributed throughout?
So the, the out of district budget where that, that doesn't go anywhere, that just ebbs and flows. Because as you say, we don't, that is separate from the Chicreen budget because I'll refresh everyone's memory that the out of district that sits in your budget is every resident in the town of Dover, age three to 22, who's not educated within the Dover Sherburne public schools. And so that is almost like its own separate budget. Like we could almost have another budget bug probably just for the out of district. That is just the way the regional agreement works. So the region actually has no out of districts because it sits at both of the elementaries. And that way that each town is paying for their residents who can't attend the public school and then you don't have to get it to the region and split it.
Makes sense.
Thank you. And then of course, we, we have some potential retirements, but we don't scroll those out until probably, I didn't even hear version two because the key date in our educator contract is that can let us know by November 1st that they're thinking about retirement. They have till February 1st to let us know for sure. What we did last year was we reached out to the staff members who had acknowledged their intent and just asked them if it was okay if we work it into the January budget. We may do the same thing because we're just talking about a difference of two weeks. But there could be one or two retirement savings that we'd be able to reflect in your version 2.0, but we don't roll that out at this point. On expenditures, so we've, most of them are highlighted with just the, well, one of them for sure, the $15,000 in SPED services is again attributed to the connections program. With keeping those students in district, there are some, some home-based services sometimes that are needed and some more specialty services that aren't by our staff, but by outside consultants. And so where you'll see that we have a variance in that line item this year, not knowing what to fully expect moving the program to Chicreen. And so you'll see that, that line being increased. And as we mentioned, we are pulling out $43,000 out of the gen ed textbooks. It represents what we had built into the budget last year for the new math curriculum. Remember it wasn't the full cost because we used some ESAR money and we used some Title I money. So I think that the total cost was much larger than that, but that's what ended up being in your general fund. So that is coming out. And the way that program works, we won't really see another significant or even our normal math curriculum cost for five years because we've actually purchased the workbooks as well for five years. So just keep in mind that year six, we'll probably, I don't know if they'll have a new version that we might have to pay more for, but we will have workbooks in some of the disposable. Well, maybe they won't even use workbooks in five.
Right.
Who knows? Who knows? But that is one of the, I think that's what a lot of the curriculum companies are doing now is they sort of get you in. I think it probably helps them continue to do their research to you to get, to get all that money upfront. And as Denny mentioned, some of the, we've expanded like Dibbles, we've added some of these other phonics screeners. So we are seeing an increase in instructional software of $11,000. That's another one that you're going to see. We went ahead, it was too important not to do in fiscal year 25. You'll see a budget of variance in your budget statement or in your actual statements and then we're building into the base for fiscal year 26. As I've mentioned, I think previously, our general education transportation, our, our school bus contract, we're in the last year, so the fifth year. So we'll be going out to bid in probably January. And traditionally, how this has worked with our contract is that we see a large increase in year one and then you're going to see smaller increases in year two and three. And then remember, we have an option to extend that contract for two additional years at almost a 0% increase. So I think given that we're working on a five-year contract, they're usually trying to catch up on how wages have played out. It's usually an opportunity for them to reinvest in our, in our buses themselves. So you'll see a fairly large increase in that first year and then we go back to normal. So you don't know what it's going to be, so I put a reserve in there, but that's the number that you see. And we, we take that hit once and then we go back to be normal for, for four years. And, and again, when the contract comes in, it's our opportunity to work with whoever wins the bid to spread the cost. So we have an opportunity, but it's best just to go ahead and put in what we had seen traditionally and go from there. So we will know by your March meeting where we stand with the contract. So we'll keep, keep you updated on that. But that is one reason why you're seeing a little bit of an uptick because that's a larger than normal increase on your special, on your generalized transportation. I would say the majority of all of your other operating counts either remain at or below. You'll see little increases, but I wasn't going to get into the nitty gritty. You know, the copy releases renewed and so there is a little bit of a higher price there. So you'll see some thousand dollars here and there, but things go both ways. At the end of the day, for your operating expenditures, you are seeing a negative number even though we've added because pulling out the textbooks. So that's a good thing. Any questions on the in district before we jump into the out of district? And again, you've got your details, so this, the detailed pages in your budget book are exactly what sits in our general ledger. So it's probably the one opportunity where you see sort of everything that rolls up. And what I did at the, sort of, I think at the end of the budget season last year, which I do think is helpful, is we take our basic monthly report that you see and pull together the three years of actual, the two years of budget. So it allows you, if you don't want to look at all the detailed accounts, to look at salaries and expenditures in the same way that you see your monthly financials. And it just then gives you the flavor of where you stand for the last three years of actuals in this year's budget. I also find it helpful that then you can take your actual, your monthly reports and look at compared to this, since we do carry the budget in here.
Thank you for explaining some of the more significant changes.
Yes.
Super helpful.
Yep. We try to give as much detail as we can in the notes that fit on the page.
Yeah.
And I think that sort of hits the highlights. Again, if on your in district, any questions that come to you as you dig deeper, just let Jeff know. But I also wanted to let you know that there's additional information that we do plan to share at the joint meeting that impacts some of, some of the things that we've been talking about.
Dawn, can you just touch on the bus piece and talk about the efficiency that we have working with the region and the number of bus runs?
Yeah, so when we, when we do go out to contract, we do, you will, there will be three separate contracts, but because we have the situation that we have the two locals in the region, built into those contracts are the concept of us sharing the buses. So there is definitely savings that we'll see in all three districts because of the sharing that we do. So we run nine buses in Sherburne that do Sherburne Pine Hill and then do Sherburne students for the region. And we do 10 buses in Dover that does Chicreen Elementary and then does the students for the, the region. By doing that, you are locking in a one driver who does two runs and you're allowed to, and you're, then you're using the same bus. So it allows us to sort of contractually obligate ourselves to 19 buses with two runs. And with that, then there is huge savings as opposed to having to run one of those buses for, by themselves. I think during school start time, there was the idea, can we just run all the buses at once? It, it came down to not a financial, we could go have all the money in the world, it's the staffing. It is nearly impossible for all school districts at this point to have bus drivers for all the buses. We're fortunate that we have a pretty consistent group of bus drivers that come back to us on annual, annual basis, but we'll still have some subs here and there. You're not going to find that at a lot of other districts. They really struggle with that. So I think that's the one obstacle with wanting to have the best of both worlds. But then it does really, so let's put the labor aside, the cost would be almost double what you have because there is huge cost savings with our, with our current formula. And I think there's very few, very few school districts who don't use a bus for more, for less than just one run or, or runs. So we will put some, I think, some of the topics that came up at our last meeting was to put some alternates into the contract to look at potential tracking. I will say our bus company gave us some input because this comes up every time we go out to bid, there's definitely pros and cons to that as well. So you really need to understand why you want to go that way, but that is an option that they could price out for us. There's been a lot of talk about, from our sustainability committees about electric buses. This area is not quite ready for that yet. The infrastructure is extremely expensive. We're still a member of a cohort of districts that participated in a grant to explore the idea, but it's just, it's mind blowing how expensive the infrastructure is. And we're still not there with the supply of, of being able to get the electric buses. And then it's a whole nother piece of employment that comes with that. You've got to have the mechanics who know how to do that. So I think it'll be coming, but I think it's going to be, I don't think, see it in the next five years for us mainly because of the exterior, the external issues that we just can't tackle right now.
That would seem, that would have to be driven by some sort of a state initiative.
Yeah, and they're great, there's grants out there. They're really applying the grants right now though to the, the, the lower income like communities for the cost effectiveness. So we wouldn't probably be eligible.
Yeah, got it.
For those, but I don't, beyond that, getting the bus, again, it's the infrastructure of the charging.
Yeah, for sure.
And that's, you know, Needham has been very involved. They were sort of the leading district in this group that got together and they were pricing out that just a basic one section, one sort of setup for charging would be probably one to $2 million.
That makes sense.
Yeah, so that is, it's something, so then Grant was trying to say, okay, is there any way if like three of us come together and pool that? But then you've got the logistics of where your buses need to go and where they need to be and where the charging station is. So there, there's, we've all participated in that, in that research. They haven't published the final report yet to, to see where that stands, but know that it's something that is definitely being looked into as much as we can, but there's just things, circumstances that we need to get over that hurdle. So it's almost like the infrastructure needs to be given to the towns that want to participate, to your point about the state just getting more aggressive.
Exactly.
But I know that's something that the towns, at least Sherburne, were kept waiting for our next bus contract to come up because they wanted that to be in there. And I'm just going to be honest, I don't see that in our, in our next five-year proposal. What we could do potentially is, and some districts are doing one or two of them and getting, you know, sort of, or doing their transportation vans. We only have one van across all three districts, so, but that's something that we could look at to start taking little baby steps, you know, and getting, getting acclimated about what it takes to do that. So more, more of that to come when we do the bid.
Can you remind us what our role is in the RFP procurement process? Can you remind us what our role is in the RFP procurement process or repeat process? Do we have one?
Great, so we will share what's going to go out and then you will, RFP basically, the way it goes, we had to take the lowest bidder. You do approve the contract.
And the RFP, the draft itself is the contract? Is that how it works?
Um, no, no, the RFP tells you like what our parameters are in school, like where you have to go, how many buses we need, what our requirements are.
Right.
Then there'll be another contract that basically, it's pretty, I'm not going to say it's elementary, but it has, it's all sort of handwritten based on, maybe they've upgraded, but, and we usually only get one, one bidder. Conley is usually the only lately.
Nobody else in your file.
Yeah.
So whatever document they provide. We review.
But it tells you what the cost of a bus, the cost of extra miles. Here at the region, we have got the athletic buses, we have the late buses, so it incorporates all those parameters, but that's in the, the region contract. And in the two elementaries, you'll see your nine buses and your 10 buses. And then there's usually a fuel surcharge, so you pick a, you know, whatever AAA rate on whatever day we go out to bid. And then there's usually a 20% window either way. So if it goes, stays in that 20% window, we don't have a fuel credit or fuel surcharge if it goes outside. So obviously if you think about what's happened to the fuel prices in the last five years, we have been paying for fuel surcharges for like the last three years against diesel, diesel fuel. So that, but that checkpoint will reset for us, which is an indication that you're already going to have an increase on the contract just because of where fuel is. So we'll-
Makes sense.
We'll have to play that out, but that's always, you know, once every five years we go, go through this process. So who knows? I think the landscape has changed a little bit. Our Boston bus company did change. There were multiple people who bid and so there was a low price, the lowest price vendor was selected. So it may be that there's more groups looking out here. I know that the Department of Ed would love to see more competition in this area, but it's pretty common for school districts when they go out to bid to have one, one person respond.
So there's no variation in the response itself? So basically whatever you set as the RFP requirements is what they will, they will propose as-
And then they just price it.
And they price it. So there's no variation in the real response? It's we'll meet your requirements and this is the cost?
Exactly.
Got it.
So if you had multiple vendors, they might be more competitive about what they're pricing the bus out of.
Or like cost sharing kind of initiatives?
Yeah.
Like, yeah.
So, but you'll get to see all that play out.
What's this? Everything you wanted to know about bussing?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, just, we probably could stop asking questions, but yeah.
That was a, that was a subtle nod. Bussing.
Sorry, I hear you. Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, no, it's, it's always sort of exciting to have, you know, it's an old fashioned bid opening. We actually have it at the kitchen at Central Office because it's something that hasn't gone electronic like all the other ones. And so, you know, sort of adds some excitement to the day. I always invite everyone to come in, if you want to come in and open the bus bids, we only got one, but, but I will say we do get probably, you know, 10 to 12 requests for the RFP. A lot of that though is mainly firms or, you know, looking to see what our requirements are and getting a lay of the land and then they want to see, so it's more the research, the informational gathering people. And then, because we'll get some from out of state, but again, I think it's more for them just to be nosy and see what's happening versus actually coming forward and, and producing a true bid. But I, I will, I'd be honest, I'm not, I will not be shocked if we have more, more than one this year. So we'll see. It would be a huge transition for the district because we've been with Conley for so many years as a lot of our surrounding districts, but you know, never, never say never.
And to Don's credit, she has just as much information about air handlers, flooring. We can save that for another day.
Yeah.
I learned so much. Research on air handlers, I know more about her.
I used to just buy a MTO.
Turf field.
Oh, yeah.
Moving on.
So moving on just in easy, we've talked a lot about out of districts. So you'll see where we stand with the 15 placements. I like the chart that we provide on table four. It sort of gives you the placement of the different types of, or the location of different types of placements that we do. You have where someone might be going to a public school that runs an out of district program and that takes students from other districts. Our collaboratives, actually on your informational items tonight, you'll see a report from Tech and Except. We're members of both those collaboratives and one of the purposes they serve is to provide and develop special ed, special ed programs where the member districts can send students, right? That's a very cost effective way to pull, to pool the cohorts. So you can see sort of the dollars that we have in that category. Obviously our largest one is to non-public placements at this point. Then we do a roll forward of, we budgeted 19 students in '25. How do we get down to the 15 so that you can see the ins and the outs? I found that just eye opening being a school committee member was if I said you had 15 placements and we had 15 placements, it's amazing though, the activity that can happen that I think is important for the public and for school committee to see just shows the volatility of what we're dealing with here. So you can see aging out, left district, returned to district. This particular budget year to budget year, only one new placement. If you remember last year, you had six new placements at almost a half a million dollars. So we are seeing some improvements in that. And then just the detail about your transportation, which obviously as your placements go down, your transportation is going to go down. So we are seeing a decrease of about 125,000 in transportation. And Except, which transports the majority of our students, is actually built their budget with a 0% increase in the mileage rate. There are, they are budgeting additional miles to be used that will cover the incremental operating costs. So they're keeping the miles, the charge we pay per mile the same. So that, there's not a significant increase there that we have to worry about for operating costs. It's just whatever miles that we, that we are running into. So that is the out of district. And then in your binder too, in tab five is your capital plan. Remember you already approved that in October, but this gives you a place to keep it on a much bigger sheet in your budget. So we will, like I said, continue to acquire new information, update you in January with anything that we have. At that point, looking at your public hearing happening on March 6th. And at that point is when you'll approve the final version to be moved on to the, to the town. And I gave you the dates for the town's open hearing as well as the annual town meeting.
Thank you.
And we will, again I said, update some of these documents. So if you, I'll always bring you hole punched pages if you want to bring your, your binder to the next page. So I think I covered everything that I wanted to cover. I think what I'll also do in January for you, I, I was doing it before the meeting, but I'll give you some examples of just calculating circuit breaker and how the transportation fits in there to see that sometimes even if a out of district placement doesn't hit the threshold, when you add transportation and it does, and they're allowing us to get then reimbursement on the transportation. So I'll do a one with and one without, just so you sort of have that calculation in your head if anyone ever asks you about circuit breaker.
All right. Thank you very much, Don. As always, very thorough reporting. I appreciate it. And yeah, if anybody does have questions, send them to me or pass them along to Don.
So I will ask you to vote though, to approve this because this will go on to Warrant and to the town.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the initial proposed budget?
Jesse, I'll move.
Okay, Jesse, do I have a second?
Martha Castle, second.
Martha, okay. All in, all in favor? unanimous? Okay. So we can move that on to Warrant Committee. So thank you. All right. So now we're moving on to consent items from, from last time. So we just have the approval of the Dover School Committee minutes from our October meeting. So were there any, any changes anybody had to that? Okay, so can I have a motion to approve consent items?
Please, Eric.
Thank you. Jesse, all in favor? All right. Now the next section is really just informational items that are in your packet. So we have the Regional School Committee minutes from October, the Sherburne minutes from September, TEC collaborative quarterly report and the Except collaborative quarterly Our next meeting is January 14th. Notice the time change, we'll be at 5:30 in the evening instead of 6:30.
You don't understand how we move.
Yeah, yes, Zoom, Zoom will be provided, Zoom will be provided for members and community members. And are there any items as of now that we want to make sure we add to that meeting? Okay, as always, send me messages if there's items you'd like to add to that. And with that, I can call, I can ask for a motion to adjourn.
Martha Castle, second.
Favor?
Thank you.
Okay. I adjourn this meeting at 7:53.